Good evening. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:37 PM. Pledge of Allegiance led by John Wu. Please stand. Place your hand on your heart and follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice of all. Thank you. Clerk, real call, please.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Present.
Closed session report. Our City Attorney will now give the closed session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Sure. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the item identified as conference with labor negotiator for the employee organizations as identified on the agenda. No reportable action took place. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the report.
Thank you. We will not have some announcements from our Chief City Clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the City Council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Now approval of agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? I hear no. Then it's approved. Next item, please.
Presentations. Recognition of Fire Department Promotion. Fire Chief Wallace will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and members of the City Council. Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the City of San Gabriel. And tonight, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce our newest promoted fire engineer. Kevin Montoya was hired as a firefighter paramedic in February of 2020 and promoted to Fire Engineer on December 7th of 2024. We first met Kevin when he came to us for his paramedic internship when he was a student at Mount San Antonio College. His performance was great during his internship, and he seemed like he'd be a really good fit, so he ended up with a job offer and working here. During his tenure at the Fire Department, Engineer Montoya has served as a paramedic preceptor for new paramedics and is currently a paramedic skills instructor at the Mount San Antonio College Paramedic Program. He's a member of our USAR Regional Task Force Four, also a member of the REMS team, which is basically the special forces of rope rescue guys that go out on the big wildland fires and rescue the firefighters that get themselves in trouble, and is most recently deployed to the Eaton Fire. His current assignment is Engine 52. He drives Engine 52 on the A shift. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight Engineer Kevin Montoya. Pinning Kevin's badge tonight will be his father, retired City of Orange Fire Captain Adrian Montoya. If we could have our Chief City Clerk administer the oath of office, please.
Please raise your right hand, and you'll repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Kevin Montoya.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much.
All right, sir, if you'd pin his badge. And if it pleases the council, once he's pinned, I'd like to request a photo with the engineer. The council's gonna do a photo, if you like.
Well, congratulations again. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the times that decide for members of the public to address the City Council on consent calendar items and on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Our first speaker is Ted Sams. Chandler Weber.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I don't know that I can follow that up, but I'm going to try my best at least. My name is Chandler Weber. I am a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration. My purpose of being here today is just to kind of give you more information about who we are. We've found that everyone understands FEMA's role when it comes to disasters, but they don't necessarily understand that we are actually the biggest lenders in the term of natural disasters. So kind of what we can offer, and it's not just necessarily natural disasters, we also are deployed in man-made disasters as well, as we saw in New Orleans around New Year, so just keep that in mind. But what we can offer for the homeowners and renters, that looks like this. We offer low-interest loans that can go up to 30 years, and interest rates can be as low as 2.563% on those, anywhere all the way up to $500,000 US to rebuild, replace your personal residence. And we could also offer an additional $100,000 for personal properties, so anything from your vehicle to the clothes on your back, all the daily necessities. Now, switching over to what may be a little more pertinent to your constituents on physical damage for businesses. We can offer, again, low-interest loans that can go all the way up to $2 million. That interest rate starts as low as 4% and can be paid back. You can turn around and pay it back tomorrow if your insurance paid off. There's no early prepayment penalty. And we also have a 12-month deferment on our payments and our interest. So again, we're designed to be, you know, a quick deployment team that can go out, get you started in the rebuilding process while you may wait on other grants or insurance, things of that nature to kick in. Switching over to economic injury, which again, may be a little more pertinent to San Gabriel businesses, that is going to additionally be up to $2 million US, and that can cover anything from your working capital to payroll, to just anything needed to keep the business afloat. And that deadline on that one goes all the way until October 8th. For our physical damages deadline, that's actually March 31st. So if you know anyone that was affected directly by the fires, please let them know March 31st, just like FEMA. But for economic injury, October 8th. And we'll see that more in we move into the summer months where, you know, business plans are written, not with the natural disaster in mind. So as tourism dollars may be lower, or just things of that nature, please keep us in mind as an option. Don't let a business, you know, struggle to stay afloat when we are a resource that's available. We're here to help, we'll be here for the long term. And I do have some flyers with our information outside of that. Please know that we're, there's several of us deployed within Los Angeles County. And thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sherry Cavett.
Mayor and councilmembers, hi. I'm here on behalf of the Kiwanis Club of San Gabriel, and every year, we provide 10, 1,000 scholarships to students who are qualified, and this year is no different. As Chairman of the Scholarship Committee, I wanted to tell you a little bit about it. I have some flyers, and I hope it's okay, I'm gonna put some in out in the hallway, too. The San Gabriel Kiwanis Club Scholarship Program is for students who have limited financial support for education and who demonstrate an interest in community service. Students applying to an accredited four-year college, university, community college, trade, or vocational school are eligible. It's open to all high school seniors at Delmar High School, Gabriela High School, San Gabriel Mission High School, San Gabriel High School, San Gabriel Academy, and Options for Youth San Gabriel. 10 students will be awarded a $1,000 scholarship each. And I'm excited to announce that yesterday was the day that the portal opened, that students could apply. It's from March 17th to April 11th. And as soon as that portal opened yesterday morning, we had a girl from Delmar High apply, so. So spread the word, please, and tell people that you might know that have a student that might be qualified for this, and hopefully we'll have a lot of them apply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have more?
I have no more speaker cards.
Okay. So, next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council requests separate discussion.
So now, would any council member would like to pull an item for separate discussion? I see no. Anyone to motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Manchaca and second by Councilmember Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no public hearing. Our next item is continued business. Item A, fences, walls, and hedges height discussion. Acting Community Development Director Tuasart will make the presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is a discussion item that's before the City Council this evening relating to fences, walls, and hedges. So just some dates to highlight a little bit of a background. Starting in July of last year, the council voted to put this item on an agenda. Then, following September 17th of 2024, the City Council discussed this item. Then, November 18th, the Planning Commission consider a proposed Zone Text Amendment to discuss and to recommend to the City Council to remove height limits for hedges. Then that item was brought before the City Council on January 21st of this year. So just to go over some general points again. A hedge is defined as a fence or boundary that's formed by a dense row of shrubs or low trees, and that's what constitutes a hedge. Currently, in the city's code, Section 153.127, hedges are regulated similar to fence and walls, which is along the front property line, four feet, and along the side and the rear, it's six feet. And trees, shrubs, and hedges in the public right-of-way are currently regulated by Chapter 95, and it provides the regulations for the public right-of-way and city-owned property. Again, the code does not define height limits for any hedge or shrubs within the public right-of-way. And also, staff did conduct a survey of neighboring cities within the San Gabriel Valley, and hedges are regulated similar throughout the region as fences and walls, which again, is limited to four feet along the front property line and six feet along the rear and the sides. An item that was brought up at the January City Council meeting is maintenance criteria for hedges and landscaping. And currently, within the city's municipal code, under Chapter 98, Section 98.02, it does address maintenance relative to safety, which is to maintain property so as to not have dried grass, dead trees, dead shrubs that would create a fire hazard or a threat to public health. So that's currently existing in the code. Additionally, there are existing regulations relative to maintenance and property values and the quality of landscaping. And to that, the requirement is that existing landscaping be cultivated, irrigated, fertilized, and trimmed. So that's also currently within the city's code as to the type of trimming or the type of irrigation that's not defined. However, it is broadly addressed within the existing code that this is the level of maintenance that's expected to maintain property values and qualities within the neighborhoods. And again, we look at the site plan, which has been shown to the City Council before. The dark, the dark line represents the sides and the rear, which currently allows six feet in height for block walls, fences, and hedges. And the dash line represents the four-feet height limit within the front yard area. And last time at the January meeting, Councilman Herrera Avila had asked questions about the ornamental screening. And so at that time, staff did not have an example of what that really means. But this provides an image of what that means. So walls that are not along the perimeter line but that are incorporated into the design of a single-family residence, this is what's considered an ornamental wall. And it was asked last time, the 15-feet setback, and what that really means. And so this is what it looks like. This is an ornamental wall, that's not a perimeter wall. So now, we get back to the hedges along the front property line. And right here, the images show existing hedges within the city. The image to the left is a hedge that's approximately four feet in height. It is a little, little bit overgrown. The hedge to the right is a six-feet-tall hedge that's also along the front property line. So this shows the difference in hedge heights, but both are along the front property line. And the center image shows two hedges that are within the front yard area but along the side property lines, and they're relatively around four feet in height. This image right here shows hedges along the sides. And as mentioned, once trees and shrubs grow into each other to form a barrier, they do constitute a hedge. And in the first two images, to the left and to the center, those are cypress trees, and if they're maintained separately, then they can be considered trees. But if they grow into each other, then they become hedges. And then the image to the right is a hedge, again, within the front yard area, actually, within the public right-of-way in this example. And that's at the four feet in height, whereas the cypress trees are at approximately... And that's at the four feet in height, whereas the cypress trees are at approximately six feet in height. And here are some images of hedges, sometimes in combinations with trees, and these obviously exceeds any height limits. The image to the left shows, again, a hedge within the front yard area. You do have the two differences in hedge heights. The one to—more to the rear is at the four feet, and the one more up front is at six feet. And so even existing properties are maintaining hedge heights at varying heights. And so, the recommendation that was brought before the city council at the January meeting was ultimately to remove the hedge height limits, both for the front, the side, and the rear yard areas. But the discussion item this evening before the city council, again, is to have discussions first on hedges within the front, sides, and rears, whether to leave the existing regulations in place, which is the four feet in the front and the six along the side and the rear, or to increase the height, again, whether in the front, the side, or the rear, remove the limit, which is what was proposed before the city council at the January meeting, set height limits for hedges within the public right-of-way. And then also, the recommendation on fences and wall at the January meeting was to leave the height limits for fences and walls as-is. So those are the items before the city council this evening for discussion. Staff's available for any questions, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. Does any council member have a question for Samantha to clarify the report? Yes, council member Chen?
Mayor. Samantha, thank you. My guess, my first question is, in the staff recommendation, what is the difference between option one and option five? Or I guess number one only deals with hedges and number five deals with the wall and fence?
That's correct.
Is that the difference?
Yes, on the slide.
I was looking at it, too. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have for now. I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes. Councilmember Herrera?
Mayor Wu, thank you. I have a question, but not for Samantha. I have a question for our chief of police and our chief of fire. If we do decide to remove the requirements for the front, is there anything that—any recommendations or anything that will impede you from performing your work? Any obstacles? That's going to be for the front. And then now, for the sides, if we do eliminate or add different restrictions for the brick walls on the sides, is that gonna be a little bit more harder for you guys to perform or your officers to perform work?
Good evening again, council. And thank you for the really appropriate question about that, because anytime we change something like that or put hedges or walls around houses, it potentially does impede. We would have to look at where a wall was gonna be placed, what the setbacks are, where hedges are gonna be placed, what they look like, what kind of material they're built out of. Staff may have to look at—it—put some additional work in during approval processes and planning to look at that. I will say that there are tight properties in the city so far. They can be a challenge, but it's never had an adverse impact on our operations. But we would always want to see what's there, so it's not a surprise when we got to it. And I think I'll hand it off to Chief Ilzaldi.
Good evening, council. From a public safety standpoint, from the police department and the officers, again, echoing the chief's comments about access or quick access to a property depending on what those barriers are, number one. Number two, also, on the sides and around the whole structure, if there's hedges and walls that are at a height where it restricts a full view of the house, that may be welcoming to somebody who's looking to burglarize a neighborhood or a house because they are concealed by those hedges. So that would be up to the homeowner to take into consideration. But that would also be something that we would want to share with the community, that when you do have walls and hedges that are blocking a majority of the front of your house or even the side or the back, it's very easy for somebody to come on to the property. With regards to walls or hedges on properties that truly come out to a intersection or a corner, as I stated before, if that height—if the height of that wall or hedge is such, it may impede traffic. It may cause an accident in that one car on one street may not see the other car approaching, and it may cause an accident just because they don't have a clear view of the full spectrum of the intersection as they approach it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So Chief Sicker, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards, mayor. I will note for the record that the council has received a written comment from Priscilla Geddes.
Thank you. So now, it's time for council's discussion. Who would like to start? Yes, Vice Mayor Manchaca?
All right. Thank you. Okay. So for the height—I guess it's Samantha—for—I wanna just break it apart, because we can be here for all night. The height of the fencing in the walls, so what you're recommending is that we keep the four feet for the property lines and six feet for the rear and side property lines. Is that also the recommendation for the hedge, or is that just for fencing and walls?
That is only for fences and walls.
Okay. So why are we not recommending for the hedges also the front of the property? Because based on what the chief said this evening and last time, I mean, it is a safety issue. Is it because it would be hard to enforce? I mean, is it not realistic to ask them to keep it four feet? Because I know hedges are wild. I mean, fences, they're stuck there. But hedges, you know, we don't have the time to be measuring whether, you know, after two weeks, three weeks, the hedges could continue to grow, so it's a little harder to manage. Is that part of the reason, or?
No, just initial direction was to not limit hedge heights. So it was addressed in totality. However, what's recommended this evening is a breakdown that the council can review hedge heights separately, front, side, and rear. That can be treated separately, and then that would be reflected in what's brought back to the council at the next meeting.
So if we decide—because, I mean, initially, I just said, you know, no hedge limit, because I believe when Councilmember Harrington brought this to our attention, I think he was more focused on aesthetics and the maintenance, you know, making sure there's no overgrown vegetation, it wasn't unkept. Because I just don't want us as a governing body to have to over-legislate, too. Because what we're now doing is, you know, we—somebody smarter than me said, you know, you can't legislate common sense. And so—I feel like that's where we're at today, especially with the hedges. The fencing is—in the walls, I think, is—makes sense. It's in line with other cities, the four feet, the six feet. The hedges that, you know, can we, as a city, really be legislating that? And—because I have a home, and I can tell you, my hedges, they grow so quickly. I mean, we just don't have—and I don't think we should have constant enforcement at every home about hedges. So I'm tending to say more, let's just—to say, you know, unlimited, just focus more on the aesthetics and the maintenance. And I know on page two of the report, it's already in the code, right, Samantha? That, you know, it has here, you know, if it—if there's a tendency to depreciate the property values of surrounding properties. I mean, I know it's subjective, but at least this code writes it in such a way that if there is a complaint from a neighbor or someone, there is at least some boundaries. It's not completely, you know, just unlimited and, you know, kind of walk away from it.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Mark, is there anything else you want to add or—about that? Because I think that—that's where it gets a little tricky. They're hedges. They're live, you know, beings. And it's just the enforcement would just seem almost impossible.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Manchaca. I don't want to say that we wouldn't be able or wouldn't enforce that. If the council's direction is hedges are six feet in rear yards and four feet in front yards, that's what we will enforce. But as you stated, hedges grow, and where there's a fence, once you put it in place and we measure it, then it is what it is. Hedges, if you cut them at four feet, you know, two weeks later, they're gonna be four feet, two inches, and six months later, they're gonna be five feet. And we would have to keep going back and enforcing that for those property owners that don't maintain those. So the recommendation came from—the discussion from council in that prior meeting, but staff thinks that's a logical way to go. And the chiefs talked to you about safety, and I think it's—at that point, if a property owner is putting a hedge in front of their house, they realize they're making it less safe, and that's a conscious decision on their part. The last thing I would say is, hedges are not permanent. If the next property owner wants to come along and cut them, then that's very easy to do.
Okay. And mentioning the chief. Chief Wallace, do you mind coming up? I had a—just a couple of questions. We've had these conversations, too. And again, you know, we don't want to tell homeowners how to landscape, you know, because from a practical perspective, especially with the fires that we just had, you know, dirt and succulent plants are the best, I guess, to reduce fires, but it's not very practical. But you had talked about vegetation setbacks that help. But you also had an interesting story with—is it Paradise? How they try to legislate, and here's a—here's a city who had—who had—who will continue to have high probability of fires. We don't. We have a history of low fires and really never had that level of massive destruction. But maybe you can kind of share your perspective, you know, the history of San Gabriel, and what happened in Paradise?
Yeah, sure, Vice Mayor. Thank you. It is a very, very timely discussion to have, given what we came through in January. To start with a story you're talking about, in 2018, about the same time the Woolsey Fire was burning in the Malibu, Calabasas, Agora area, the night before a fire near Paradise kicked off, called the Camp Fire, ended up being 150-some-thousand acres, killed 84 or 85 people, and basically eliminated that town from the map. As they got through the rebuilding process, they went and tried to revise a lot of their codes, because what they were finding was there was a lot of vegetation, a lot of ornamental vegetation, inflammable vegetation right up next to houses that were kept—catching embers, and they were very receptive to lighting off once an ember is in that fuel bed. And that's what caused a lot of the houses to burn. As they're working on their codes and trying to revise their codes and prevent that from happening, there was considerable pushback from the constituents and the communities. That community is very much a "don't tread on me" mentality. People go there because they want to be left alone. They want to live the way they want to live. And I believe their fire marshal, if not one of the Cal Fire Fire Chiefs, nearly lost a job over the uproar of banning ornamental vegetation within houses. And at that point, they were—I think they were asking for a five-foot setback. So it didn't—it didn't pass. I don't know if people are planting up there again, next to the houses. But again, it goes back to, you know, to the homeowner's choice. If they decide to put it there, they're gonna assume some of that risk. I believe what we're seeing with a lot of what happened in Eaton and the Palisades is, again, ornamental vegetation, inflammable vegetation right up near structures accelerated the destruction of a lot of those structures. It may not be the only causative effect, you know, given the situation and the conditions in those couple of days. You know, it's anybody's guess what would have really stopped that. But when you can eliminate fuels around a house, it gives that house that much better of a survivability profile.
But it's really up to the—the house owner.
Yeah, it's really up to the homeowner. You know, it's how much risk are they willing to tolerate?
Okay. Yeah. So I'm just back to the fact that I'm not comfortable, you know, regulating or legislating. The homeowner is right to have the kind of landscape they want. We can do public education. We can—we can do other things. We can have—you know, we have the code here that says that if it's going to depreciate or if there's some kind of concern, if a neighbor calls and says, "There's a concern because of the hedges being too long—or too tall and not well-kept," then we have that ability already in the code.
Correct. It's right there. It's in that Chapter 98, Section 2, you know, in the nuisance section.
In the nuisance section. So we're still protecting our residents because we have that code.
Correct.
So if we do say hedge is unlimited, just keep it, you know, maintained. We're not—I can't say—we're still protecting our residents.
Correct. And I think you hit on it, the public education piece of this is—it will be a very, very key part of this thing. You know, we receive complaints from neighbors. We receive complaints from neighborhoods. And sometimes we get homeowners calling and just asking, "Can you come and look and see what our vegetation looks like?" We're happy to come out and do that. I don't know that we have the bandwidth within our staff to go out once a month and inspect all the properties in the city.
Well, no. No, I don't want that.
But that's why I think that the public education piece is so key to this.
Yeah, maybe we can work on that.
Impressing on homeowners the importance of keeping these well-maintained and trimmed. You know, I know at our north fire station, there's hedges all the way down the south side of the property. And I remember being stationed up there, and we do yard work every Saturdays, and every week you're out there, because those things, they do, they grow.
They grow very fast.
And to keep them looking good, to keep the dead and dying material out of the hedges, and to keep them trimmed at an appropriate height is a job and a commitment.
Yeah. I don't think we have to put in the ordinance, public education, but maybe that's something to consider through our public information officer, maybe during Fire Day. But I just want to make sure that homeowners have an ability to make those reports, or just like we do with Public Works, you know, if they report potholes, they report different situations. If we had something like that, I think it would go to enforcement first, Samantha's department. But I just don't thi—I think we need to do a little bit more in that area, because I know in the past, we've had complaints about homeowners not maintaining their homes. And I understand it could be financial also. But, you know, we all have to kind of take care of each other and make sure that there's no nuisance, public nuisance. And so, I don't know—I don't have the answers. I'm just saying, it would be nice to have something out there available to our residents. Okay. Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
And then I had one question for Chief Ilzaldi. So I understand with the higher fencing, it could—you know, it's kind of hard to scale a fence in some case of an emergency. So I kind of get that. You know, the higher the fence, the harder it is to get resources, whether it's police or fire. But what about hedges? You know, I guess you can just go right through them, or—I'm just kind of curious, what do you do? I mean, I know the fire department has their axes, and—even with fences, yeah, chain link or not the chain, the saws. But—but how much—how would that affect public safety if we set, you know, unlimited heights on hedges? It's just a matter of keeping them maintained. I mean, it's a lot easier than a wall, right?
Well, in some aspects, a wall could be easier in the sense that depending on what kind of hedge you're talking about and how close the hedges are to each other, that may be more difficult. And it may seem easy for an officer to push their way through the branches, but depending on what the makeup of those hedges are, again, a wall may be easier to scale.
Okay. Okay. But so then, I mean, would you have any concerns if we didn't have limits? I mean, solid fences, you know, you mentioned how it limits visibility, so the same with hedges. But if we—if we would decide, you know, no height limits for hedges, I mean, would that be something of a concern, or?
I think it's just a case-by-case basis. And again, what the hedges are, what kind of hedges they are, how they're planted, that might be more challenging in one yard than another. But as—there's gonna be a challenge in—when we're in an emergency and responding to an emergency in times of the essence, a six-foot hedge that's well-maintained could be problematic in officers trying to get either themselves into a property or equipment into a property.
Okay. Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to share about this issue? I know it's not something you want to deal with, but you're waiting for the next item, but.
It's—it—no, it's not that. I am happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, mayor, I'm just going to say that I'm—for the staff recommendation, I guess I should look up there, you know, I think we should just keep the fencing in the walls as-is, four feet for the property—front property line, six feet for the rear and side. Regarding the hedges only, no height limit, and just focus on the aesthetics and the maintenance. And so—and then, public education, I think, is important that we have—and do it in multiple languages. You know, maybe our enforcement— You know, maybe our enforcement group, if they see something, you know, they have a pamphlet, they can provide something, because right now, I think, I know neighbors seem to complain, but they really don't seem to have an outlet. It's like, well, where do they go to file this complaint? And so I'd like us to maybe be a little more collaborative.
Thank you.
So that's all. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Chen.
I would tend to agree with Vice Mayor Manchaca that you can't legislate common sense sometimes, and I would be in favor of removing a hard limit, and again, as she said, focusing on good maintenance, you know, making sure everything's tidy, and I'm kind of, I would be in favor of that. But I guess, I don't know if this is a question for Samantha, or if we have any NIS people here, code enforcement, and just asking if, in your experience, or code enforcement's experience, if we were to remove the hedge height limitations, have you seen people, or have you seen people often misbehaving or doing crazy stuff? Like, or, I mean, in terms of realistic problems this would cause if we removed hedge height? I mean, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, Councilmember Chen, I think it would be tough to answer that because the people who are following the rules right now are keeping their hedges below six feet and well-maintained, so we don't know how many people would then grow them taller. But that being said, we don't normally have problems with the hedges that are not maintained. We have problems with the hedges that are over the height limit, and we have dozens of those throughout the city.
Okay. So, yeah, again, I think I would fall more on the side of agreeing with Vice Mayor Manchaca. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Anyone else? Councilmember Ding.
Yeah, the questions asked Samantha, is in another city, they have the code, it's remove the hedge limit, our neighborhood city or another city that have this kind of?
So Pasadena does not have limits, and also in San Marino, along some of their major arterials, they actually allow for taller height limits because, to serve as a buffer between the traffic and the properties. So there are a few.
That's I saw, that our neighborhood city, even their front hedge is higher too. You cannot see that, even they cannot see that they are home too. But I agree, the chief was talking about the safety purpose, if for the law officer, how to they can protect the resident, you know, they can see, like, robber people or theft people they're getting in, it's really effective to them too. So how can we balance on that? But I know, like, I agree, the vice mayor talking about it, we cannot legislate, we can't even the hedge grow up, right? And another thing is, just based on my knowledge, if your hedge too high, right now, insurance company do allow this kind of survey. If you do not properly maintain the hedge, they don't renew your policy. Okay? So I think maybe for the city, the code enforcement maybe can do, at least like, do the, like, well-maintenance, maybe better than just the higher, right? So when you, the code enforcement can do, like, so, oh, not because of high, because this is higher, it's caused a fire. Actually, this time, even like, the windy, it's also caused a problem too, because the too high the hedge, you know, that you, like, the, will be caused the neighborhood city, neighborhood, the house, maybe they're hit by the hedge when, because they grow up, you know, even your neighborhood car too, you know. So for our code enforcement, it's also tough, you know, so how do you, you cannot control everything, right? So if neighborhood, they are neighborhood, if they have a complaint, maybe our code enforcement maybe can take a look at, so it's, this hedge, it's properly maintained or not. So probably that's maybe more realistic to the current, the city code, you know, so. I'm still open mind for the remove the hedge limit, but I listen to the rest of the council member idea, you know. So which one, it's really, we need to think about the property owner, they are right, but also you need to think about the neighborhood, if they complain, for the, actually, that's even my, I, most of the time, it's also, like, the insurer, they say, "Oh, my neighborhood, do this tree caused me problem," you know? So always listen to this kind of things. So even they're asking me, so I, sometimes I just let them asking their city coenforcement, what they can do. So I think there should be the, try to the balanced way to get our, the new resolution. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Just real quick. Councilmember Ding, you know, you mentioned San Marino, they have higher limits because they don't want you and me looking at their houses.
They don't want the officer to help them? They pay.
Councilmember Hura Avila.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. It's only on the streets that have, Councilmember Chen, the streets that are, you know, heavily trafficked, okay? I'm on the fence on this, okay? No pun intended, maybe pun intended, but this is a hard one for me because you have, you have places that, like, North San Gabriel, it's known for the aesthetics, where they have no fences whatsoever, but again, I'm in the fence because the whole city has the regulation of the four-foot fence, four-foot hedge, right? And yet, the people on the north side, they don't put, tend not to put the fences. But at the same time, I am trying to look at this as Councilmember Ding mentioned, on the public safety perspective. If we do unlimited, and I don't want to, I don't want to regulate hedges as much as Councilmember Manchaca mentioned, but we already had those regulations standing as is, so we were already, for the history of I don't know how many years, we were already regulating that. So with that said, I would, I would be okay with leaving everything as is, with the exception of unlimited in the backyard for your privacy, three-foot hedges on the front to keep it, or whatever it is right now, to keep it uniform, keep the city pretty tight and uniform. And I would be open to, like, the main arteries or something that were heavily trafficked areas, but that's going to be where I am standing in the public safety perspective and the aesthetics, and making sure that we're building for the future. Again, I'm in the fence, I'm open, but I would say right now, I will be standing on the side of public safety and making sure that we're uniform across the board within the city.
Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. Well, thank you, Samantha. I have a question about how many code enforcements that cases related to the hedge heights have been processed in the past two years?
Oh, I don't have that number this evening, Mayor.
But do we have any?
We can get statistics, but not.
Number doesn't matter. I mean, just wanted to know that if we had a case before in the past two years, we do. Okay, good. So it's, has, you know, if you're aware of any legal challenges or lawsuit in the past related to hedge height?
If there are any, they would be civil, so neighbor to neighbor.
You do neighbors and neighbors. And also, do you aware that state law or any regional planning authority, for example, Los Angeles County, that especially we're about to having our very first affordable housing on Delmar Avenue, that do they impose restrictions on hedge heights? Have you heard anything about that?
No.
No, okay. Well, I think, well, thank you so much, all my colleagues that asked all the question. I do have those questions being answered. So to me, I mean, for example, if we have hedge or if there will be a restrictions, let's say a policy today, then they said no hedges at all, does that mean that they can stay away from fire? I don't believe so. I mean, if there's a fire, there's a cause for the nature that the fire will be there. And also, I noticed that in our neighborhood, we have a lot of iron bars in front of their house to prevent any break-in, but also that increase the difficulties for our fire department to access to the property to rescue. So this is always the trade-off, a give and takes. To me, I mean, it will be always double-sided, that if you see the hedges as a blind spot for safety reason, and that could be more privacy, I think we should allow our resident to make their own choice. If their fire, if their insurance company complains about this property is not well-maintained, the hedge is too high, and I cannot give you the insurance policy, that's the decision they have to make, either to remove the hedges, or they would like to keep it and without any insurance protection. The same as the things that we should not allow, we should not prohibit people from, you know, building their, like, window bars, you know, iron doors, just because they feel safer with that way. And maybe I would, I would say that some of the neighborhood, they don't really want to see the neighbor having those kind of protections, because that implies this place is not safe, but this is their property, it's their personal assets, and they do have the right to do the things and take their own risk if they want to put that on. So that's why I, I personally will be, I'll tend to support that remove the hedge heights limitation, just remain what we have with all the walls, inside walls and back walls with six and four feet. I think that's pretty simple.
Was that a motion?
Please.
Okay, I'll second.
Good question. Hedge is for the all-hedge, remove the limit, or just the back? So that's.
Actually, yeah, it's all hedges. To me, I would say all hedges to be removed.
Yes, Mayor, with that, the item tonight is a discussion item, so staff will come back.
Please, okay.
Staff will come back with an ordinance.
Just staff direction?
Okay.
Yes.
We take that to see.
But thank you very much for the comment.
But thank you very much, Samantha. So I think that's.
I'm sorry, could I just ask something, Mayor? So when it comes back, is it coming as consent agenda, or we have to go through this again? Oh, boy.
We will give a short presentation, but we have talked it fully enough that the public knows what's going on. We'll do a quick public hearing, and then the second reading would be on consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Samantha. And next item, please.
New business item A, fiscal year 2024 to 2025, mid-year budget update, resolution number 25-13. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. It is my presentation to present the mid-year budget update for fiscal year 2024-25 tonight. So on June 4th, 2024, the City Council adopted the annual budget, annual general fund budget with $54.5 million in revenues, $53.9 million in expenditures, with a net change in fund balance, ending fund balance of $21.7 million, with the reserve percentage of 39.5%. As of January 31st, after we've received actual receipts for revenues and expenditures, there are additional appropriations have been made, and we've calculated a vacancy savings. We're projecting that revenues will be higher by $434,000. Expenditures will be higher by $1.2 million, with a slight net change in fund balance of $116,000, leaving us with a reserve percentage of 38.2%. And then on the upcoming slides, we'll take a quick look, a quick detailed look at the revenues and expenditures, and also a five-year forecast as well. So general fund revenues, as mentioned earlier, they're projected higher by $434,000. Driving that change is our taxes are projected lower by $334,000. Taxes make up 65.1% of general fund revenues. On the next slide, we'll take a more detailed look at taxes. Other line items that are driving the change at mid-year is our intergovernmental, as our state mandated reimbursements are projected higher by $99,000. Our interest income is projected to be $150,000 more, and charges for services are projected $450,000 higher, as plan checking is up nearly $400,000 than originally adopted due to a large development paying for their plan checking fee. Our general fund taxes, as mentioned, it's $334,000 lower. A few of the line items are driving the decrease in the adopted revenue budget. So property taxes, lower by $69,000. We've just been informed that $125,000 of our property tax will be deferred until 25/26, so that will be added to the 25/26 budget due to the government's executive order to defer property taxes for those impacted in the wildfire areas. Our sales tax in our Measure SG is also projected lower than the adopted budget by $92,000 and $90,000 respectively, as the projections on taxable goods at the beginning of the year are a little bit less as we progress through January 31st, 2025. And then finally, our transient occupancy tax or hotel tax is projected lower by $221,000 as the actual receipts we've received so far are growing slower than we originally projected when we adopted the budget. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Uh-oh. So general fund expenditures are projected higher by 1.12 million, and so we have multiple forces driving the expenditures lower and then also higher. So we had some budget savings that are projected. So the largest one is our vacancy savings at 1.5 million. We have a capital outlay savings for those capital outlays that will not be incurred in fiscal year 24/25, but will be carried forward to 25/26 of $439,000. And then we had savings in our lead buyback program, as well as we're able to lower the transfer to the Mission Playhouse by $184,000. We do have some budget increases, so alongside of the vacancies, the separations and the resignations over time is adjusted upward by 1.3 million. Our separation payouts are projected higher by $355,000, and we've had some council-approved appropriation increases during the year, 1.37. Two notable one, we did the miscellaneous agreement, as well as we appropriated money for the SoCal Edison Facility relocation. And then departments are asking for mid-year adjustments of $298,000. So total net increase of 1.12 million. Five-year historical analysis of the general fund. So we begin in fiscal year 2020, 2021. At that, at that point, we had a beginning fund balance of negative 1.7 million, and then you can see from 2020 through projected 24/25 that the fund balance has continued to increase, where in 24/25, we're projecting a ending fund balance of over $21 million. And in the next, we'll take a look, a future look, we'll look at a five-year general fund forecast. And so here is just a lot of data, and we got some graphs that will explain it a little bit better, but the one-line item to take a look at is kind of right there in the middle, the net change in fund balance. So our projected is a decrease of 116, and then we have our slight increases over the next few years. There are certain assumptions that are built into this forecast. For '26, '27 through '29, '30, there are COLA increases. '25, '26 doesn't have any pay increases for employees. There are also projecting. There are also projecting slight increases to revenue and also slight increases to expenditures as well. So just a future look of where we think the general fund will be progressing in the next five years based on the current reality we have today. So here is the net change in fund balance. So you can see that over the next five years, it's projected to be positive. We do have a couple spikes in 25-26. We'll be selling $350,000, we'll be getting $350,000 of our Prop A exchange in that we're have another $350,000 in 28-29, where we get a little bit of spike in our net change in fund balance. And then we have our total fund balance that we're projecting and our, and our reserve percentage over the next five years. So you can see that we're, our reserve percentage over the next five years is projected to be well above our 20, 25% ideal reserve percentage and much higher than our 17% minimum, right around, averaging right around 38% across the board over the next five years. So next step, so we'll continue to monitor and report on city finances through the remainder of this fiscal year. We're currently in the fiscal year 25-26 budget process. This week, we'll be starting interdepartmental budget meetings with the city manager. And on, in, in the middle of April, we'll have our public budget study session with the city council. That will be presented at a public meeting of the city council. We'll move into individual budget meetings with the city council members. We'll provide an updated five-year forecast, and then we'll bring the item back for a public hearing and budget adoption. So recommendation is to receive and file the mid-year budget and approve Resolution 25-13, the mid-year adjustments to the 24-25 budget. And that concludes my presentation. I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Will. Does any council member have question for Will to clarify?
Yes, real quick.
Member Chen.
Yeah, thank you. Will, thank you. Always a great presentation, very clear, very, is easy to understand. On your presentation, page five, with the mid-year, the general fund revenues and the taxes and the, the amount under budget for the transit, the TOT, transient occupancy tax, is $221,000 lower than we expected?
Correct.
What's wrong with our hotels? Everyone loves our hotels.
Yeah.
Just not, not enough people staying?
It's, you know, as, as the, the first two months of revenue came off, it's kind of leveled off a little bit. I guess coming out of COVID, we had the big increases as the hotels were, were shut down pretty much. And, and we saw these big increases, and we saw this trend. And so over the first two quarters that we received, it's just kind of leveled off. Hasn't gone down, but it's just hasn't increased that we were projecting for the fiscal year.
Okay, very good. We can only hope.
Yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I see now. Does Chief City Card, do we have any public comment?
No comment here.
Thank you. It's now time for council's discussion, who would like to start? No? Then I, I have a question. Well, thank you so much again for the presentations. So according to your report, the general fund balance is projected to decline by $116,000, which is $690,000 lower than expected. So is there any, you know, additional cost control measures that we should consider to mitigate the shortfall?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. And the one item I failed to state was that the projection is based on the assumption that departments will spend 100% of their appropriated budgets. And so our departments spend what they need, so we have a maximum appropriation. They can't go over that. So as departments spend what they need and, and try to, you know, use as best as possible. So any savings that we'll have in those individual operational line items will have an impact on that, on that bottom line.
So which means that it's a very conservative. It's unless that every department spent every single of their pennies and to the end, then it will just happen with this number.
That, that's exactly correct, Mayor. It's very, very conservative.
Got it. So the city level, the reserve level remains at 36%, which is wonderful. And actually, that is way above than the 25% that is our goal. So given the, the recent economic condition, do we anticipate any changes to this target reserved percentage in the near future?
That would, I think, you know, the discussions we've had with our reserve levels, 17% is the minimum amount that's recommended by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. So we've started there, and then based on the reserves that have been built, we've increased it to 25%. So I think, at least in my opinion, it seems 25% is a pretty good level for us.
Good level, right? Okay. Well, of course, higher is better. The report, the report knows that the plan checking fees and the fire service revenue exists a projection by 450,000. So is it like a one-time increase, or we expect there will be a sustainable revenue trend?
So those charges for services, they're a little volatile, especially when we have developments within the city. So if there's a large development that is paying for those fees, then those fees are going to be higher. If it's a normal year with just kind of the normal plan checking charges, then it's going to be kind of a, you know, lower than when we have the large development. So this year, we had a large development pay, so that boosted the plan checking charges for services revenue.
I see, okay. So I think that's pretty much I have, and thank you very much for the report. So do we have any more question?
Just a real quick question.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
The, the deferral that you mentioned, the property tax deferral order of $125,000, I mean, we're going to be getting it, but it's not going to come in until the following year. Did you accrue for it in the current year already, or did you not include it? Because then we would have pretty much a balanced, there'd be no decline of $116,000, which is, you know, very minor. But I'm just kind of curious, is that $125 included this year or for the following year when we get it?
Vice Mayor, we, the deferral, you know, we reduced our property tax by $125,000 in 24-25. So we were looking at a balanced with a slight surplus, but when we, you know, reduced our property tax by 125, that's when we.
Had that decline.
Had that decline.
Okay, so, so you're going to recognize it, you're needing to accrue for it. You're going to recognize it for the following year. If you would have accrued it, then we would have been, you know, balanced completely.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, actually, thank you so much, Vice Mayor, that you bring, you bring up a very good topic that is about a property tax, because we now have a deferred property tax. So the, actually, how will the deferral on those property tax revenues impact the fiscal year of 25 and 26 budgeting?
So, you know, since we, the money will not be received until 25-26, so property tax will be a little bit higher by $125,000 that related to 24-25 property tax. So it should be a little higher than normal in 25-26 when the hundred, when the $125,000 is recognized.
But since we are not collecting that on time, so is that more like a account receivable? Or I owe you?
Yeah, so it, it probably won't be in my account receivable, but it's, it, it's just kind of, I guess, in our, in our projections, it's just going to be $125,000 of what we're expecting in 25-26.
In this year, I, I understand that there is a Eden Fire, there's a, like a FEMA funds that will be given to our fire, fire department and PD. So are there any like a one-time federal or state funds expected in the next fiscal year? Because we have already paid out so much, so much on assisting the fire.
As, as far as, so kind of two things. One is when our fire department goes out under Cal OES, they are reimbursed for all of their overtime costs. So those revenues come back as intergovernmental. As far as receiving reimbursements from FEMA related specifically to the fire, we're still in kind of early talks with them, and we're presenting our information. And, and then we'll continue that process with them and to see if we're potentially eligible for any type of reimbursements for expenses that we incurred.
So since those money has not been, you know, received yet, so are we, is that still also in your budget chart here?
It is not, it is not.
It is not, right?
It's not in there.
So we're anticipating to get the money from, from FEMA. And so that will be the numbers, a little bit different from what we projected.
The money from FEMA is no guarantee.
No guarantee.
Yeah, no guarantee. So in, in.
Conservative.
And it usually takes more than one year.
I see.
So we, we've begun the initial discussions with providing information, and we've been contacted. And, and then we'll kind of see where that takes us as far as our eligibility to receive reimbursement for the expenses we incurred.
I see, yeah, since we have already proclaimed the termination of our emergency orders today. So, but thank you very much, Will, for the presentation. And Councilmember Chen, you have more question?
Yes, thank you. So per the staff recommendation and the request to authorize Resolution 25-13, in the staff report, page 16, the, the adjustment that you're requesting is that $464,000? Is that the, the amount that where your staff is requesting? And which is why we need the resolution?
Yes, Councilmember, that, that is the amount we're requesting to adjust the budget by.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Sure, we need a motion.
Kind of made it.
All right. I guess I'll move to pass the recommend, accept the recommendation.
Okay, so motion made by Councilmember Chen.
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Manchaca, and please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Next item, please. Thank you, Will.
Authorization of temporary police staffing increase and addition of human resource specialist position to the department's authorized personnel. Resolution number 25-12. Police Chief Elizalde will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, Councilman Ding, Chen, and Herrera Avia. Thank you for having me tonight. Tonight's presentation seeks approval from the council to temporarily overhire five sworn police officers and to add a resource specialist, I'm sorry, a human resource specialist position to the department's roster. As with most police departments across the state, the San Gabriel Police Department is experiencing staffs, staffing challenges related to retirements, resignations, and officers laterally now to different agencies. Our allotted number of sworn police officers is 54. As of today, the San Gabriel Police Department has 42 sworn officers and one trainee who will be done with his training next week, bringing us to 43. The 43 officers include myself, who are newest officer in training, and does not only represent the number of officers working in patrol. Tomorrow, two police recruits will graduate from the Rio Hondo Police Academy and begin their six-month field training program in the coming weeks. In an effort to address our staffing levels, our Recruitment, Training, and Equipment Bureau has been working diligently to attract and hire qualified applicants. In April, we'll be sending four police recruits to the Rio Hondo Police Academy, and if successful, will graduate in October. We currently have 12 applicants in the testing process. And although we are below our allotted number of 54 and in an effort to maintain continuity with our staffing levels, I'm requesting to temporarily increase our complement of sworn police officers to 59. By allowing the temporary increase of overhires, my staff can continue processing qualified candidates without having to slow our efforts in fear of reaching our maximum complement of 54 sworn officers. Our projections indicate that an additional six officers will begin separating from the organization, including lieutenants, as soon as this Thursday and carrying out into the fall. Our hiring process is currently taking approximately three to four months. And when an off, when an offer of employment is given to an applicant, their position counts towards our full complement of 54, even though they still have to attend a six-month police academy, and if successful, enter into their field training program, which is an additional five to six months, depending on their aptitude. From a practical standpoint, the department doesn't recognize academy recruits or officers in training as full sworn officers until they have successfully completed their field training program and are able to ride as solo officers. This temporary increase in overhires will not automatically equate to 59 sworn police officers, but will allow staff to project future vacancies and begin working on the vacancies before the employees separate from the organization. This will reduce the time of being understaffed. My proposal also seeks the council's approval to add a human resource specialist to the department's roster. Historically, this position was filled by a sworn police officer, and adding a human resource specialist to the department's roster will free up one additional police officer to work under the operations and/or administrative divisions. A sworn officer isn't required to fill this position, and other departments have been successful in staffing this position with non-s sworn employees. This position is mostly clerical in nature, which includes managing all aspects of recruitment, department training, equipment distribution, processing, carrying concealed weapon permits, filming permits, massage license verifications, and managing police recruits while they are attending the academy. Currently, I have a part-time administrative assistant who has been learning and carrying out these responsibilities for the last several months. In closing, I respectfully request the council to consider and adopt Resolution 25-12, which will help the San Gabriel Police Department with our future endeavors. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for the report. So does any council member has a question for Chief to clarify? I see none. Do we have any? Yes.
Yes, so I have a bunch of questions, actually. First of all, what is the percentage right now that we have allocated to PD? That would be for our finance person.
My memory. Could definitely get back to you with an exact answer after looking at our budget. But between fire and police, and, and the police department, I think we're over 50%, and I would say the police is probably, probably around 35, 40% would be my ballpark guess.
So, I mean, it just, I want to look at it in a way that we're trying to be fiscally responsible, but at the same time putting PD, you know, first as far as public safety. So I have a few more questions. This plan will cost the city over 600, at least 600 annually. So with that said, I want to understand, I want to understand how temporary is temporary? How is that going to play out?
So again, what we're seeking is approval to up our overall number from 54 to 59. This way, our staff can project in speaking with those officers that are looking to retire, resign, or lateral out, and we can start to, to fill those vacancies sooner than later, rather than wait and, for example, let's say if we had a full allotment of 54, and I really couldn't process anybody because I can't extend an offer, because that offer in itself would take us over the allotted 54. So again, this doesn't equate if it's approved that automatically we're going to have 59 officers and/or are we going to be paying for 59 officers? It's just giving my staff room to work and to project into the future so that it mitigates any downtime in understaffing.
Yes, because I'm trying to understand, because right now we have nine vacancies, right?
Correct.
Right? And we're having a hard time filling those vacancies. And I'm trying to wrap my head around adding a few more and how that's going to, that's going to help in the long run if we can't even fill nine. What are your biggest challenges right now with filling nine?
Well, again, my, my staff has been given a directive that I want these positions filled as soon as possible for various reasons, but to have a fully complemented police department for the community of San Gabriel. Again, we're, we're bringing out two of the, into the academy, or from the academy tomorrow. We're sending four into the next academy in April. So our efforts are, are showing that we are moving in the right direction. And in speaking to my staff that does the hiring and recruitment, they feel that we can get very close to 54 by the end of the calendar year. And so I would. And so, I would ask respectfully to allow an increase in that number of staffing so that if we do reach that point, our efforts don't have to stop. And, again, being able just to project if there's going to be another lateral out or another retirement out, we can start working that, and ideally, we would want laterals to come in because it cuts down on the time for training in the academy. But with that said, if I'm going to fill a vacancy, more than likely, it's going to be a recruit, and that recruit goes away for six months. We hope that they're successful in the academy to be able to come out, and then we hope, again, that they're successful in the field training program. And then, once they are completed with that, then we would count them as a full sworn officer serving the community, even though as soon as I give them a conditional offer on paper, that goes against the 54.
So, interesting, so, I, I mean, I hear it all the time across the board right now, everybody's facing challenges with recruitment and retain, retention, right? How are we, how have we been dealing with the, with people retiring before in the past?
I, I can't answer that in the sense that in my roughly year and a half that I've been here, this has been the biggest influx of movement that I've seen. What I'm, what I'm looking at and, and speaking to the staff that is retiring, they're at that retirement age for the, for the benefit at three at 50. So I have a significant cohort that is reaching that age 50, some that have already left, some that will be reaching 50 very shortly, and they're taking advantage of that, finishing out their career and then either going into full retirement or looking for some other type of employment.
So what I'm going to ask, I think I kind of asked already, but my biggest fear is just being fiscally responsible, and then if we say temporary, that temporary, how long is that, I'm going to re-ask, how long is temporary, and when are we going to say, okay, we're ready to go, or are we going to keep that temporary, uh, those temporary? Because we're asking for 50, from going from 54 to 50.
Nine.
59. And then, my biggest fear is that we're going to make 59 the, the new norm, when with 54, if we're at 54, we're pretty good, I think. What is, so my next question is, what is the per officer, per, per resident ratio?
I, I don't have that with me tonight, sir. I think the last time I looked, it was just under one officer. It was under one, one percent, if you will.
One per like seven or eight hundred residents?
And I would have to get back to you on that, but I know, depending on what study you're looking at, when you're officer per capita, we're, and some studies were right in the middle, and at, on, on other studies, we're at the lower end.
Yeah, because essentially, we're asking for more, more money, if you think about it like that, right? But we're asking for more money to justify the people being able to be fully staffed and not have an avoid. Because when we're asking for five more positions and six, essentially, it's, we're talking about at least 600, 700,000. So, I mean, for me, I want to go back to the space limitation, what is the, if we get to that point where we have enough officers, 54, and then we're getting to that 55, now 56, and everything is going smoothly, which I see what you're, where, why you're asking, because that probably never, we will probably never reach that point, but if we do, do we have the space? I mean, or do we have space limitations, or are we going to start hearing, okay, well, we need more temporary bungalows, or how are we going to house these necessary officers?
So, my hope is that we do reach that goal, and my hope is to someday come before council and ask to increase the number of officers and personnel at the police department. It's just not to say we need more officers, but with more officers, we can provide the community better services and have quicker response times. On a separate, in a separate conversation, we'll be coming to council within the next month or so, just to share that we are looking at going out to an RFP for a space and needs study, and with that study, once it's completed, we'll, we'll have a better idea of what we can do with the property, and again, working with our finance director.
Okay, let me see if I have more questions here. When it comes to, because we're looking at overtime, right? With less officers, we have a huge impact, right? Now more people, work-life balance, more people have to deal with overtime. How, how is the department coping on that, and what, and where is the overtime coming from?
Well, the, the overtime is coming from the shortages in officers. I have, for example, our detective bureau, that's down three detectives, and even though I have an active list of officers that want to become detectives, I can't simply make that move because I will impact patrol level staffing. So I also have that issue with promotions that I want to make, but because of the staffing levels, I, it's just not prudent to make them right now, because that would affect the overall staffing in patrol. There's a saying in police, in law enforcement, patrol comes first, because it's the men and women working patrol that are responding to the calls for service day in and day out. So there are those challenges, we recognize it, and, but we're also mindful of those employees that are willing to, and want to work the overtime. We're still mindful with monitoring that, because again, I have to make sure that they're well-rested, that they have that positive work-life balance, but the bottom line is, we do have quite a bit of overtime, and the overtime that is being required is to fill patrol.
Got it, thank you. One last question. Have we explored alternative ways to enhance police safety, such as better training, technology, and reallocating existing resources to make everything more effective?
I'm sorry, if you can repeat that, sir?
Yeah, have we, have we looked for alternatives? I know you've been here for maybe a couple of years now, right? Have you looked for alternatives, ways to enhance public safety, and, such as better train, uh, different trainings, technology, different technology, set out for different technology, and, or reallocating existing resources to make everything more efficient?
So, I'm all about efficiency, and that's one of the things that I clearly recognized in, in my tenure, in my short tenure here, is that I described that the San Gabriel Police Department, although they are doing a fantastic job, and the men and women are out there helping the community, inside the building, we're in an analog world, not a digital world. And so, there are platforms to make us more efficient, there are platforms where I might be able to release the, the human resource of, of somebody spending a particular amount of time on, on reports. I just went to a conference last week in Riverside with different chiefs in California, and there, there's a lot of technology out there. Obviously, with the technology, there's a price tag, and what can we afford and, and what is right for us, just because there's some technology that perhaps other larger, bigger agencies are using, it might not be the right fit for us. We'll be coming to council probably in the next few months to speak about what we call a CAT RMS system, which is pretty much the brains of the organization as far as computer technology. That's going to have a price tag over a million dollars. So I'm mindful of that, and there are things that I want to change and improve. Again, if we're more efficient, my hope is that we can release the human resource side and reallocate that out to the field or into special assignments.
And I'll just ask the last question, because I want to be mindful, being responsible, with the same time keeping everybody safe and keeping your department fully staffed. And this is going to be more of a long-term question for our finance director, and have we considered the impact, the future impact, and can we, can we sustain, based on our budget?
Can we sustain adding these temporary positions? So.
Or are we going to have to cut?
I get, you know, one, one way to look at it is, you know, anytime we're under 54 positions, we're generating savings, so we're getting vacancy savings. So potentially, in, in the year where they're able to get up to 54, you know, there are a certain amount of vacancy savings that would have been incurred, and so if they went up to 55, 56, at least for that year, it would probably be a wash. It's just kind of, you know, just trying to, you know, think about it analytically. But in, once they would get up to 56, now that would be two additional positions that would be on the books that we would have to fund in the next year's budget. And so.
Got it, and then, and you hit a question that I had earlier here, I just didn't ask. So when we do have the vacancies, right, what, what is happening to this money? Is it allocated to the police and they can use it, or does it go back to like a general fund, or what happens to that money?
It goes back to the general fund, we, we take it into consideration with our mid-year update, mid-year budget update, so we'll, we'll recognize like a, a savings from the vacancies. You know, sometimes you have more overtime because there are the vacancies, and if, if employees are retiring or separating, the separation payouts go up, so there is a little bit of a offset, but it does go back to the general fund, it is a savings for the general fund.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Will, you're going to have to walk back up. Sorry, not, not too rough, hopefully, it, just a quick question, regarding the, you know, what we talk about, the vacancy savings, but then, we have to, you know, because we're, the PD is, is technically understaffed, then we have to make our existing officers work more overtime. So, taking those both into consideration, what is the net effect? Are, are we saving more than we're spending on overtime, or where, where are we, kind of like?
We do, you know, we do save more overall when, you know, versus the, the amount of savings we have from vacancies versus the amount of extra overtime.
Okay, all right, and then, but it's just, as we've discussed before, as we force our current officers to do more overtime, then that cuts into their work-life balance, and then, you know, we don't want to be unnecessarily hard on our officers, and we got to make sure that they're at full capacity and well-rested and, and, you know, 100%, 100% out there. Okay, thank you. That's all, I need to yield, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? So Chief, City Card, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, a written comment in opposition was received from Chastity Jennings Nunez. I have no speaker cards.
Thank you, we received that. So it's now time for a council discussion, who would like to start? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Great, thank you. Chief, I guess, you're it. So regarding the human specialist, so you said other departments do the same thing, they, you find somebody who has that experience, because, you know, there's a difference between having a sworn officer and then a, a non-sworn officer, but I'm assuming that human specialist you would have some kind of experience in the hiring?
Yes, and my staff spoke with the, our HR director months ago, and just having conversation as to what classification within the city would fulfill what that person does in the police department. And so, that's how it came about as a human resource specialist. However, this wouldn't be a typical human resource specialist, it would be more centered on what that position does. So whether they come with experience, and that experience would be directly correlated to where they're coming from and what they want to do. Anybody else outside that realm, even a sworn police officer, there's a whole training component. And so, right now, the last person or the last sworn officer to fill that position was Officer Gilbert Lee, who is now one of my sergeants. So he works day shift during the week and is dealing with responsibilities in patrol while help, while helping the part-time admin assistant take on those duties, because he cannot do it, nor did we have the time to fully train somebody. And because there's so many aspects in it, and it's just not police, it's, we're talking about the, the processing of carrying concealed weapons, filming permits, massage parlors, mandated training by post for the police officers, there's a variety of things that they have to do. So our hope and what we would like to do is, when we get to the point of, of announcing that opening, that those qualifications or those requirements or job duties and specs would be more centered to that position, rather than just a, you know, a municipality or a municipal human resource specialist.
And, and this is, falls right in line with being more efficient, because we need officers on patrol or on the streets versus behind the desk doing a lot of this clerical work. So.
Correct.
I do applaud you for that, because I know it's something we've been talking about for a while, so for you to take that initiative, you know, I think that just shows, you know, the, the fact that you are looking at the organization as a whole for efficiency. So I do applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Regarding the 54 officers, I, I feel like we've, we've been stuck there for a while, because we have all these new projects, and, but we haven't increased our officers with all the projects, we've had at least, well, we had 20 that were kind of in the pipeline, I think we finished eight, and we're still at the same number. So, has that number been evaluated? Does it make sense, or at this point, 54 is the number?
I believe 54 was the number, or, the number 54 was established prior to my arrival, and there are a lot of programs within the department that we can and should be doing, but again, my focus to my staff is that we need to fulfill patrol first, and so it's on a regular basis that I'm pulling detectives from their caseloads to work patrol, or specialized assignment, and even our motors to work patrol. So although we've gotten close to 54, that fluctuates, and I think that's with most departments right now in the, in the state of California, if not the nation, where one day they're flush, and then the next day they get notice that two or three of their employees are laterally now to retiring. So that, that number is in flux, I would love to be at 54, that's the goal I set in speaking to my staff, that I want to reach 54 as soon as possible, because we'll be able to do more, but more importantly, it'll reduce the overtime cost, and with that, it's going to reduce the number of hours our employees are working. I, and again, to the councilmen's comments, I need to make sure that when they come to work, that they're fully rested and able to make the right decision in critical moments.
Yeah, because the overtime cost, we talk about dollars, but there's also the cost of wear and tear, and maybe some of the reasons, you know, we have them leaving, is because there is a lot of overtime, along with being expected. I just think that 54, we're going to have to reevaluate at some point, because I still think it's very low, it's been there for a long time, but it's a number that we can work towards. Can you explain, especially for the public, kind of the process, because when we talk about hiring these extra six, first of all, we have to get to 54, so we're not even 54, so it won't even be triggered until we get there.
That is correct.
But even when we hire, we have to put them on, on paper, accounts to the 54, but they're not really out there patrolling, or they're not there yet, because there's like an 18-month period. So can you just kind of walk us through, you hire someone, and I know they have to go to the police academy, and then they have to do our field training, then they're on their own probation, so kind of just share.
Sure.
What that, what that means when you put someone on the books, because most of these are all entry level, I mean, very few lateral, so it's really entry level. Can you share with us what that looks like?
Not a problem. So there's three categories that we work with when we're receiving applicant, applications. One, as she says, somebody with no experience, coming in as a police recruit, and they have a testing process, a written process, a physical agility process, interview process, and through that, we start waiting, like I said, I think yesterday we had interviews for 13, I know all not, all of them were not successful in the interview panel, so now I'm down possibly two or three. Once they meet all the testing requirements, that's when we start looking at their background, and they enter into a background phase. Like every other agency, that's where we tend to lose most of our applicants. On day one, when they're coming in, they may look strong, but then when the investigations start into their backgrounds, actions they may have taken, you know, as, as younger adults or even some very recently, that's going to determine if we're bringing them on. So everybody has to go through a background process, whether you're a recruit, a pre-service, and/or a true lateral. A pre-service is somebody that has already went to the police academy, and perhaps was already picked up by an agency, but for whatever reasons, perhaps didn't make their training program. program. So that, we can move with them faster as they still have to go through those initial processes, they have to go through a background. But we're able, if they're successful, to get them out into the training program much, much quicker. And depending on where they left the prior agency or if they're straight out of the academy, that's going to determine if we're looking at five months or maybe even three or four months for them to complete their training. And then we have the laterals that, in the true sense, they worked at an organization for whatever period of time, and there's no lapse in their employment. So they go from whatever agency directly to our agency. They still have to go through a field training program, which is accelerated because they've already been in that police officer role. So that all has to occur for each of those categories. But for the police recruits, once we give them a conditional offer, then we send them off to the academy. And to be more efficient in this, I started using, at one time we were only using Rio Hondo. So I entered into agreements with not only Rio Hondo, but the LA County Sheriff's Department and most recently with LAPD, and now looking also at Golden West. And the reason I'm looking at multiple police academies is that when we have a cohort ready to go, and if Rio Hondo doesn't have a class for five or six months, I can now look and choose what academy I want to send this cohort to, to get them trained much quicker and out into the field training program. So with that, the academy is roughly around six months. If they're successful on that, then they come out to the field training program. Depending on their aptitude and how fast they're learning and how fast they're retaining, on average, it's around five or six months that they're riding with a field training officer. So even if they're four months into their field training, we, it does go against the number of fifty-four, but we, within the organization internally, don't count them as a full officer towards staffing because they need to be with their field training officer. So once they complete that, and we have our most, our current trainee finishing up next week, once he successfully completes that, then he will be out on his own. Then internally, we'll look at him for staffing. So he'll pick up some of the slack in the staffing that we're experiencing.
So I'm sorry. So when you select them, let's just focus on the police recruits.
Sure.
When you select them and you have them go to the police academy, do they get counted towards the fifty-four once you give them that conditional?
Yes.
So we're counting them, but they're not out there yet. They're not even here. I mean, they're in the police academy going through their training.
That is correct. On paper, they're, they go.
They're on paper, they're here, but they're really not physically.
At least for another year.
So they go through six months of the police academy, full-time, full-time work, right?
Full-time, yes.
Or not work, but, well, anyway, it's full-time. And then they have their field training where they have to be accompanied by an officer.
Correct.
An experienced officer. And then, after that, so we're looking like a year. Okay, but they're on the paper.
They're on paper.
Yeah. Oh, well, I guess when they're doing their field training, they're physically here, but they can't be by themselves.
Correct.
Then they finally are able, after a year, to ride on their own.
Correct.
But they're still on probation.
Our probation period for sworn officers is eighteen months.
Okay.
So, yes, they can be.
So you're right, so it's eighteen months, yeah. So, but they're on probation, even when they're by themselves, they're still on probation.
That is correct.
Okay, so we're looking at eighteen months. So even if you get to your fifty-four, then you add the six. I mean, realistically, it might not even trigger because you got to get to your fifty-four first. So, but you want to have that latitude so you can be doing the planning. Because right now, once it's on paper fifty-four, you have to stop everything. You can't really recruit because you got the fifty-four. So that's all you're trying to look at, is for strategic purposes?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And being able to, when our staff learns of people either in that retirement mode, resignation mode, or lateral mode, then we can start to backfill that in advance as opposed to having to wait until they physically separate from the organization and now we start the hiring process. And in that case, I could have lost a handful of months.
Because we are kind of top-heavy. We do have a lot of experience and officers who are reaching that point of retirement.
And that's where I'm at right now.
And so that's where you're at right now. So it's going to take time to build that bench, but you do need some flexibility. Can you also explain, I don't think a lot of people realize, you know, there was the days of, you know, you had one position, you had, you know, a hundred applicants. I mean, those days are gone. You had the days where, you know, in the pipeline, you would have, I think the military was a great source where you leave the military, you go into law enforcement. But all that has changed. And so maybe you can explain about the market, you know, hiring law enforcement, about the mandates, what was required of a police officer thirty years ago has completely changed from the perspective that so much more is expected, a lot more training, there's just a lot more requirements. And so it's changed. And so maybe you can kind of guide us. Because I think there are still, I think people still believe it's easy, you know, you just put up a sign and here they come. And so a lot more is being required. And so that's why all the departments, all the police departments having challenges in hiring, and so we're competing. So again, I applaud you for going outside of just Rio Hondo. We do need to have, cast a wide net and have opportunities for those recruits that are interested. But could you just kind of explain what the whole law enforcement profession and how it's changed from those who think it's still the same? I mean, I hear about this about teaching, the teaching profession, same thing. There used to be a hundred positions, you know, for, a hundred applicants for one position, and teaching has changed a lot too. But if you can just share with us.
Sure. I'll use my own experience. So when I first started applying, that was around nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine. And I remember being one of a few hundred people in line at my former agency, and I think at the time there was three spots. Right now, if you want to be a police officer and you have a clean background and you're driven and you really want to help the community, you're very marketable. And again, from years past, there, as you mentioned, there are legislative mandates that we have to fulfill in that hiring process. So it isn't as easy as putting a want ad in the LA Times saying, you know, San Gabriel's hiring police officers. It's being able to attract them to San Gabriel in the first place. And again, I think you've heard it from some of the newer hires that have come before you, that they choose San Gabriel because it's a family atmosphere and they feel a closeness to the community. So with that, we need to attract more people. And again, through mandates and law enforcement advancing and being better than it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, that's for the better. But with that, it takes a little longer to hire somebody and truly weed out those bad apples. And law enforcement, the profession, especially here in Southern California, has pretty much given, been given a mandate by the citizens that we serve in that they don't want police chiefs or administrations taking chances on individuals that are not going to be what is best for the community. So again, we might have somebody go through the process, and when it gets to my level and/or the captain's level, we start going through the background. And if we don't feel comfortable with it, even though we have already spent money, time, resources, we'll cut our losses right there. I don't want to bring in, that's a directive that I give in my staff, and they understand that, I don't want to bring anybody onto the organization that is going to impede all the great work that has already been done. I'd rather take my loss right there while I can as opposed to taking a chance. As I've also talked to my staff, I will take a chance on a pre-service. And we have just recently offered a young gentleman that wasn't successful in his training at another organization. But through that background, all of his supervisors and managers had nothing but good things to say about him, other than he wasn't a good fit for that organization and the level of activity. So with that, I challenge my FTO to say, if we bring this person on, there's nothing in his background to preclude us from hiring him, but now the challenge is on the FTOs and say, fix him, work with him, and I think we can get something productive out of that. So there are the hiring challenges that we're all facing. As I've had conversations with the city manager, when I meet with all the chiefs in LA County, we're all hurting. We're all hurting. We're all experiencing the same thing. It's just the relevance. Are you talking about LAPD? That's down a few thousand. Or are you talking San Gabriel? That's down nine. So when you look at all those numbers, I don't know of one organization that's fully staffed, feeling comfortable, that they don't have to worry about recruitment. That's on everyone's mind right now. And again, that takes a lot of resources.
So the strategy of yours to have those additional six, is that something that's also being used in other cities? They try to do that, or we're just so top-heavy? Because it just seems like we keep losing mostly at the top. I mean, I know we've had some police recruits for a variety of reasons have left too, but are other cities kind of doing the same thing, trying to be able to position themselves so they don't just stop, they can continue on? Because they know there are going to be some, there are going to be leaving.
That is true, and that is correct. And as close as next door in Alhambra, maybe around a year ago, maybe a little longer, they went into a hiring process where they were going to start over-hiring with the same ideal in mind that, let's start filling our positions. And even though we might be overstaffed on paper temporarily, we know we're going to start losing people either to retirements or other people, or other reasons for people leaving.
Okay. Well, thank you again for bringing some new ways, some new approaches to our police department and the hiring, because it's not business as usual.
It is not.
We have to do things differently. I'm very supportive of this agenda item, and I'll let my colleagues continue on. But thank you for your service. Thank you to everyone. And, you know, I think this is one way to try to handle this because it's been going on for a while. And we, I don't, can't remember a time we've been fully staffed, frankly. So hopefully this will help us in reaching that. Public safety is one of our top issues, and this is a good approach. Thank you.
Thank you for the confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So before we move on, Mark, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot what I was going to add, and probably wasn't intelligent.
Yes, Councilmember Chan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is probably, real quick, easy question for Will, again. Just to clarification, just to make sure I understand correctly, if we, if the council passes this resolution tonight, it doesn't come with a specific dollar amount. This is just authorization for the five, six positions. And then that would get baked into the budget process. And then, and then we would approve it through the budget process. Is that correct?
Pretty correct, Councilmember Chan. So yeah, so if the HR specialist position gets approved tonight, it will be included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Okay.
So, and then the council will be presented to present the budget.
Okay. So this resolution isn't asking for a specific dollar amount. It's authorizing the six positions, however much the math turns out that they are going to cost. And then that'll be put into the budget, and then that's for our separate consideration when we do the budget process.
A little clarification there, Councilmember Chan. So the five officer positions are, will not be budgeted. So the five officer positions, the idea is that it's going to be offset with vacancy savings when we get there.
Oh, okay.
The one HR specialist position will be budgeted.
I see.
That'll be included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thanks for explaining. I yield.
Sure. Councilmember Ting.
The Councilmember Chan, the question, it's a, just want to double-check. This is, you say not include these five officers, the budget for the next, the year budget? But I saw yours, the fiscal impact say it's next year, it's two, six-hundred-twenty-five-thousand.
Yeah, for the fiscal impact, we just wanted to put that in there to see the, to present the potential magnitude of those five officer positions. But the plan would be not to budget for them. And when and if we ever reach the fifty-fourth position and we continue to hire, anything over that fifty-four, at least for that year, would be offset with the vacancy savings that's been incurred getting up to that fifty-four. The only position that we would include in the budget would be the HR specialist position.
Only HR, not for the these five officer?
That's correct, Councilmember.
But the potential have the these five officer you need to fill in, right?
Potentially, yeah, in the future. We look at our history with the turnover in our police department, and we are hiring people, people are leaving. So there's always been a certain level of vacancy savings even at the fifty-four level. So the idea is that if we ever would get to the fifty-four and then we would go beyond it, there would be, at least for that year, vacancy savings built up that would offset it in that year. So that is the reason why we wouldn't budget for it. In the following year, it may become, once we get over the fifty-four in the following year, that will be something we would need to consider if they're able to maintain at the higher level.
Okay, thank you. Next question is regarding the chief. Okay, so I understand that like right now you still have the nine position, sworn officer the short, right? So if we, you have the new hire, I think it's two kind of, one, it's academic, right, from the Rio Hondo or rest office, agency. Another one, it's for the like experienced one, we have a chance to, right? So you're talking about an experienced one probably with training like still need like three or four months?
Yes, they, anybody coming onto the department, whether they're right out of the academy or a lateral, and I believe that's what you're speaking of, would still need training. But a true lateral, depending on their experience before they came to San Gabriel, that would all be dependent on what their experience was before they lateraled over, and that's normally around a three or four month period.
It's at least three or four months.
Roughly, again, depending on how much experience they came with.
Okay. If we're inexperienced, probably take how long? No experience?
No experience, we're looking at around six months.
Six months, okay. So for the this kind of training, so what's the percentage they will be? For example, right now, you, if just in case, it's not increased this five position, just like a nine train, then you recruit it. So currently, if you recruit this nine, who, what's the percentage that can finish the training, successful?
I would say, based on my experience, if we were to hire nine and send nine to the academy, I would expect to lose two in the academy, through academics.
Okay. If we lose two, it's not too bad. But I hear about it right now, looks like, recently, I hear, looks like it's more percentage to they're not successful, right?
There's a variety of reasons. We've had to separate some recruits because of behavior that they chose to take on while they were in the academy. And again, I'd rather make or make that hard decision to have to separate or terminate somebody because of behavior while they're in a controlled environment and rather than allow them to continue and then bring possibly that behavior to the community. So those are hard decisions because, again, we have used so much, so many resources to get them to that point. But then a lot of it is on them once they're in the academy. So just for clarification, when they go to the police academy for the six months, it's almost weekly that they're tested. They're only able to fail a single test twice. And once they fail it the second time, then they're out. There's nothing I could even do. I can't call and say, oh, give them a third try. No chief can. It's just the requirements of, going back to Vice Mayor's comments about it's a different error in policing. Maybe that was looked at differently in years past, but once they hit a threshold, then the academy even cuts them. So it's difficult.
Okay. Yeah, if, like, one reason is because that person or the behavior you, the chief terminated to them, how about the percentage if they feel it's too stressed or it's not a good working for the sworn officer? How many percentage they resign?
That's normally on the lower end. So when they do go to the academy, their very first day is called Day Zero, which doesn't even count. And that's where they probably receive the most stress. And having been present at Day Zero, I've seen recruits get their stuff and leave the academy because of that one, within that first hour or two, that's too much stress for them. And that's after having gone through a successful test. And that's after having gone through a successful testing and hiring process, and sitting before us saying, I'm ready for this, this is all I ever wanted to do, I wanted to do this, and then, yeah, they walk off the hill at some point.
Why I asking this percentage, because the, I think your strategy, you want the like, another extra five position, it's, from my understanding, you want more opportunity, if, for example, you have additional five, plus right now the nine, total is fourteen, if you have the fourteen candidate, so if the, the percentage, like, some terminate, some resign, so, so that's the, I think, from my understanding, that's your strategy, it's, that's why you need a temporary these five, the temporary officer, to help our city to recruit a new, new swine officer. Is my understanding is true or not?
A little different, it's, the extra five is to mitigate any downtime and having to train officers when I get a vacancy. So we talked about the number fifty-four, so if I'm at fifty-four, and right now as it stands, if I know that someone's going to be leaving, I can't, without city manager approval or council approval, give a conditional offer, even though I know somebody's going to leave in two months. So this five, that, this extra five that we're talking about, that's not actually five officers out in the field, working, it just gives my staff latitude to kind of keep that training progress and that training train going, so that we don't have any downtime.
So it's consistent, this kind of training, just in case some officer will be leave, so that's the, another purpose too, right?
Exactly, it's preparing in case somebody does leave.
Okay, all right, yeah, so I think for the, right now, probably, it's, yeah, I personally thank you that this strategy, so help our, we have the more prepare for our public safety, and hopefully we can have the full staff for the, for the, our swine office, currently the fifty-four, we try to reach out a goal for the fifty-four, if the future, if we're financially can affordable, I think the population, the grow up, and the business grow up, so probably we need more, and we will see that, yeah. And one question, if, talking about the, like, this temporary hiring, it will be sunset after fully swine officer, right? If you already hired the fifty-four, so no more temporary, five, is it correct, based on the staff report, the page number two?
Correct, the plan is to have this temporary over-hires sunset, and my hope is that the trend with law enforcement, and because we're seeing a greater number of applicants come through, that we may reach our allotment of fifty-four, so even projecting that, we may sunset it where we're not seeing such an influx in people leaving the organization, again, for either retirement, resignations, or laterally now.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, my biggest concern is going to be where we reached Officer fifty-four, and then we're on fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-nine, and then the impact, the fiscal impact, and where are we going to get the additional money, or how are we going to work it out, and what programs are we going to have to cut, or what resources are we going to have to cut elsewhere? But I know that it's just temporary, right? It's just temporary, and I think it would be like a pilot program at this point, where if it works out, then we can continue it, and if it doesn't, I mean, I believe we have the authority to cancel it, right? That's going to be my biggest point there. Public safety is my number one priority, being fully staffed is my number one priority, supporting PD, fully support, but then again, we're going to face that fence when we have Officer fifty-five, and I know it's only going to be temporary, but I want us to be mindful of that, that we are going to have to possibly have to cut on other ticket items that we have, and you, it sounds like, I thought you, felt like you were going to say something.
Again, with the approval of these five additional positions, doesn't mean that I'm going to carry the organization at fifty-nine, and theoretically be in the red in my own budget, so it's just strategically projecting any future movement where I can have somebody ready to fill that vacancy right away. So it's not an automatic, and nor am I looking to carry the organization with fifty-nine officers, and then just hope at that point, waiting for retirement, resignation, or a lateral.
Right, because I feel we have bigger issues, right? We have a lot of issues, right? We need a new, we would love a new, well, personally, I would love a new police station, I think some of the council members also would, and the community as well, and then retention, you know, across the board, it's not just San Gabriel, it's across the board, I would say, I will argue that this is across the United States, and not only with PD, with different industries, industries where I used to work at as well. So we, we are in a place where, like Councilmember Manchaca mentioned, we don't have a funnel, I mean, I'm kind of curious to know about that as well, like, where are we, if not, like, that's the first time I ever hear about that, that we, and it makes sense, right, that we used to funnel through, like, army and military and all that, is that just not happening? I'm kind of curious on that.
It's still happening, so one of the directions I gave to my recruitment team was to think outside the box, so I believe it's in late May, we're going down to Camp Pendleton to take part in a recruitment and hiring process for those military and service people that are getting ready to leave the military and call LA County a base home, so we're taking advantage of that. Again, I think it's a different era, obviously after the Vietnam era, that you saw a lot of those soldiers coming back and becoming police officers, and again, that has changed dramatically, so, but again, we're looking outside the box, thinking outside the box, and looking at every way possible to try and attract quality applicants that are going to serve the community.
So just would like to, you know, give you credit for, because I got a chance to sit with you and ride with you, and I know that you have San Gabriel at heart, and I just know that you're thinking outside the box from our conversations, and that you are, from listening to you right now, not just staying in your seat, and you're going out and trying to get San Gabriel on the map, so I want to commend you for that as well.
Thank you.
Also, we have to consider future, right? Making sure that we are also trying to recruit within the community, so people stay within the community, being present, I know that I saw you and your group out in, I believe at an elementary, being visible, I'm not sure if that's part of your initiative, but I think I do see that out there, and I like that. I mean, what's your approach on that, as far as recruiting? I would love to see a stronger recruit, for us to strongly be recruiting around the community, maybe some flyers or some, some sort, because I know we had the big sign, but, I mean, people would just drive by it and might not think much of it, and maybe quite frankly, some people might think that they're not worthy enough, or, because it's different when you're like, hey, you should consider joining, right?
So out of the four that are going to the academy next month, one currently works in San Gabriel and has their family business in San Gabriel, the other one lives in San Gabriel.
Interesting, I mean, that's wonderful, that's wonderful to hear, I mean, I just would like to hear from you, or that you're pushing more, any plans of trying to hire within, outside of what you're doing already?
Yes, that's the goal, and I think it pays off in dividends later on down the road when somebody can call their home or community where they grew up, and they look at it differently, because they're...
Excuse me, I just want to interrupt, the police explorers is a great way, that's a great pipeline of getting local kids into our city, so I wanted just to mention that, because I know one of the officers that we just hired, or maybe a couple months ago, he was a former police explorer.
Yes.
From San Gabriel.
And then it's also, like, is there any opportunities to collaborate with the local schools, maybe like, I know we have Council at LA, and I don't know if you're doing it already?
So there are, those are opportunities that we're looking at as far as recruitment and trying to build relationships, and that's part of my goal, is being out in the community and being visible.
Well, again, I just want to say, being mindful, right, when we reach that, that number, and where that money is going to be coming from, but at the same time, I think that overtime, I do, I would like to see it reduced with the, if we have more, or we're fully staffed, so I'll be watching that, and though right now, we're looking at about, what is it, three hundred thousand, when it comes to overtime, something north of that, a little bit?
Roughly, and again, it just fluctuates depending on the needs, but that overtime is being driven by the staffing challenges that we're having in patrol.
And Chief, do you see that, that number reducing?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think we should focus on the items here, I mean, I understand that you asked a lot of questions, so maybe you can share with your colleagues that, what's your position on agree or disagree?
Yeah, so, I would just like to say that, I would like to see those numbers reduced if we do go with this, and I'm just open to see the different opportunities that, you know, the new creative ways to retain more of a full house, so it's going to be, I'm on the fence on this, just given the fiscal responsibility aspect, but I'm looking towards supporting, supporting you, and just giving you that opportunity to lead.
Thank you.
And not restrict you, and that's where I'm, that's where I'm going to stand.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mark? Okay, good. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but actually, well, I think, I would like to just go with really quick, first of all, we also have those candidates in LAPD.
No, so it...
Part of that.
So let me clarify that, so what I did was entered into agreements with the academies.
Academy.
So that if I have a group of recruits ready to go, I'm not dependent on just Rio Hondo, depending on when the academy starts, I can send them to LAPD, I can send them to the Sheriff's Department, and possibly even Golden West, again, trying to be more efficient and trying to get officers through training and out onto the street.
Do you happen to know that which academy that will be providing the fast track, or they can just give you someone qualified sooner?
There's really no fast track, because we're, all the academies are under a state mandate as to what they have to teach, so even though the sheriffs is different from LAPD and Rio Hondo, the curriculum that they have to teach is pretty much boilerplate for all academies in California.
Okay, yeah, actually, I would like to share with my colleagues that many years ago, I tried to be the candidate of LAPD, and the first day, then I dropped. I got to tell you that anyone who is able to get the T-shirt shows candidate, that is the best already, to me. I even did not get my T-shirt, then I just decided, that's it. So I have no problem, to me, I mean, this is not the right away things, and we are, it's not really a right away financial impact, and we are just giving a little bit more rooms for Chief and RPD that is on their flexibility, in their, like, I would say, manpower's pool, so it's just provide a little bit more, I would say, the feasible way to manage, and in long term, so I have no problem to support this.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the recommendation.
You're so quick, I want to move.
Okay, you can move.
Whoever wanted to move.
We just need to move.
Okay.
I second that, okay, you move.
Okay, so we adopt the resolution twenty-five dash twelve, and it's a motion by Vice Mayor Manchaca, and second by Councilmember Ding, please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five zero.
Thank you. The next item, city manager report. Oh, nothing, okay, good, and council comments and conference meeting report, who would like to go first? Yes, Councilmember Chan.
I'll go first, I'll go quick.
Sure.
Let's see, oh, just one quick thing to report, that on March tenth, I attended my monthly Chinese American Citizens Alliance monthly meeting in Rosemead, and that's all I have, so I yield.
Thank you, Councilmember Chan, anyone else? Report, report? Okay, Vice Mayor.
All of you, remember the five-minute limit? Remember five-minute limit?
Okay, well, I had a...
That's your job now.
All right, well, I had the great opportunity to be part of, and fly over to Washington, DC and attend the National League of Cities Conference, which took place on March tenth to twelfth, got the distinct, the distinct privilege to meet all sorts of council members, and mayors, and vice mayors, and mayors from across the nation, and got to pick their brains, and got to see what they got, what we don't got, and what we don't have, and it was a great conference overall. I went to youth development work, workforce, meeting, committee, and then I also got the distinct privilege to meet with our US senators, Alex Padilla, Adam Schiff, and a few congresspeople, as well as Congresswoman Rivas, Congresswoman Freeman, Congressman Cisneros, and one of the top legislative aides, I believe, for Judy Chu, and also got a chance to listen to JD, President, Vice President JD Vance speak, and overall, I hope to see more of San Gabriel presence, I think, for the most part, that event, there was very minimal San Gabriel Valley presence to begin with, but I saw how important that particular conference was, given that we had an opportunity to, to meet with our legislators, and, and that's all I have. I actually wanted to see if I can make a, I'm not sure how this works, Mark, if you can help me with this, but I wanted to have a discussion, I saw something on, on the news recently about Councilmember or Mayor John Woo and the internship program, I had not heard about this before, and I wanted to have a time or a chance for the next meeting, or somewhere along the lines before this kicks off, to have a discussion within the council about, about this particular internship. So how can I do, do I make a motion, or how do I get the...
So Councilman Herrera Avila, the way items get put on an agenda is exactly what you just did, which is to bring it up in council comments, and then you would ask your colleagues if at least two others would like to put it on the agenda, and if a majority would like to, then we would put it on the agenda, and if nobody else, or only one person is interested, then it would not be put on an agenda.
And would I be able to explain why, briefly?
Absolutely, briefly, because otherwise we're in Brown Act issues, not because of the five-minute rule, but you are able, within the Brown Act, to give a short synopsis for agendizing purposes?
Given that it's a great idea, but I didn't hear about it, I don't know if it was brought up before in council about the internship, and that's having about eight to fifteen, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers of people from, or students from Taiwan coming over here and offering those opportunities, and how, how it's going to impact staff time, and, and right now, it's my understanding that it's not going to be offered to, to our local residents, so that's why I want to have, make sure that we're having this conversation, and I would love to have dialogue on this, and I would love to have our council member support, just that we can talk about this in public.
May I suggest something? Could perhaps, Mark, maybe distribute a memo to us, explaining it, and if we need to have an agenda item, because I see us, we have a, if you look at the forecasts for agenda items in the next two months, I mean, it's pretty loaded, there's a lot to discuss. I think if we just get more information, and if you feel that we need to have more discussion, then maybe bring it back, but I just would hate to add another agenda item if it could be done in some other way.
Anyone else?
Yeah, okay, so, from last council.
Yeah, so, okay, so then I can... Okay, so then with that said, with your recommendation, that would be, I'm okay with taking that, so then let's do that, Mark, if we could do that, and then I can, I don't know if I could, at that point, one-on-one, make recommendations? And then I can, I don't know if I could at that point, one-on-one, make recommendations.
We can, I'll be more than happy to put together a memo. And absolutely, we can talk with any council member about how the program would work. And then council can decide if you want it on a an agenda after that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
I think he's already finished, so, okay. So just a moment, a quick, like, from the last council meeting. It's a lot of event, but one event, I, on the March seventh, I go to the, called the MOF, the forty-four annual woman stream, the conference, the expo in our city of, in in the San Gabriel Hilton. And it's a really great event. And I, then I know our Vice Mayor, it's a formal rewardee too on this organization. So so it's our city, we we have the Asia population, but I also have the Latino population too. It's they are, the organization's really good, do the good job for the Latino community. So I I feel that we have this opportunity to have the liaison to join the this, the conference and the and the expo. And they, on the last Saturday, I have a chance to join the grand opening, called the Seeing House grand opening. Seeing House, okay. Actually, they're currently, they're opening the Humber. The three years ago, when I'm mayor term, it's have a chance, they come to our city to looking for this kind of place. They provided the one stop, the care for the senior. So it's especially for the low income. So it's it's really gave me a lot, it's impressed for the, they are, they are, the this kind of the facility to provide our community. So I, yeah, it's a Humber, but I hope for future, if they are invest, some investor really want to come to our city, around the city, maybe help our our city, the senior or or like a low income, the the senior person. So it's, yeah, if we, I, if the rest of council member or 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 a resident, if you're interested, you can go to the, visit through the center to learning something. Maybe they, you can gather like a good one-stop service from them. You don't need like, like sometimes you need to like go to the doctor appointment, you need to do the physical therapy or you need to like activity, daily activity. Say in the one stop, they can, you can do everything in the one facility. Yeah. So, yeah, that's my report. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'll just mention it again. It was, it's called the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, MAOF. This is the first year they chose to, after forty-four years or forty-three years, to come to move from Monobello to San Gabriel because they've grown so much. They had like eight hundred high school young ladies. It's called the National Latina Women's Conference and Expo. They also had nominees. We had, well, one of the awardees, I'm sorry, is Belisa Scobedo, who is, who stars in Happy Place on NBC and she's done quite a few other shows also. And then there was also actress Jessica Marie Garcia. But it was just a great moment. They allowed me to speak on behalf of San Gabriel. Councilmember Tony Ding was also there. He had an opportunity to to welcome everyone. I was a awardee five years ago. I received the Latina Trail Blazer Award. So and they have assured us that they will be going every year, coming back to San Gabriel. So it's just, it just shows our diversity and it's exciting to see. Hopefully, we'll get more hotel revenue, hotel tax, as you mentioned. Yeah, TOT. Regarding, oh, San Gabriel Mission High School, it was the same, it was the very next day. I was asked to be the keynote speaker for their career day. And again, it was a very successful event. They have a, they're starting a very, they have a very strong alumni association. So if you're a graduate from San Gabriel Mission High School, please call them. They're looking for more members to join and just help these young ladies in in life after high school. Let's see. Mosquito Board, we met this past Friday and it was very timely because I've actually had two questions now. So I'm just going to read it to to make it easy. It's the vector control team launches the mosquito treatment campaign in Eaton Fire Burn area. It hasn't been ignored, but the mosquito vector control, we couldn't go in there until yesterday, March seventeenth. And so we will be looking at all the pools that are there because they are prime for the mosquito breeding. We were undertaking a lot of initiatives that will target these swimming pools and also large sources of standing water that can be breeding grounds for disease-carrying mosquitoes. Unmaintained pools pose a high public health risk. A one pool can produce up to three million mosquitoes in just one month. So it is critical that they allow us, and now they do, our vector control technicians to go in there and do, it's a wide variety of measures. First, you have to identify the areas and you need to find different kinds of mosquito control products, which include mosquito fish. And so so the vector control team is on it, but it will take time. But we just got approval to go in yesterday. And then regarding tomorrow, the San Gabriel Police Officers Association is hosting a taco fundraiser fundraiser and raffle, eleven thirty to three thirty PM. And all the proceeds will be going to Detective Greg Mallett, who is fighting brain cancer. So hopefully, we all could lend support. Even if you can't be there, you can always donate. They do have a GoFundMe account. You can go to their social media. They're also going to have a raffle. So even if you don't like tacos, you can enter the the raffle and all the proceeds are going to help Detective Mallett. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, where are they doing that?
Um, let me make sure. It says Mission Grapevine Arbor, but if I remember correctly, it's just right outside. They have the barbecue grills. Well, it's tacos. So, yeah, I guess they're going to be grilling. Yeah. So you can't miss it. Just go to Mission Playhouse and you'll see it.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
I got to get used to saying everything at once. So just want to say thank you to our mayor. I won't be able to attend the ceremony. I think that's coming up pretty soon. I am going to be traveling. I'll be in Washington DC for non, non-city business. But I just want to say thank you for a successful term and for leading our city. And if you see that empty chair, it's not intentional. It's just, I'll be there in spirit. I'm going to be doing my thing. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Okay. So now my report is just just few items. On March eighth, I attended the Chinese American Military Support Spring Festival, where I had the privilege to meeting, of meeting many veterans and active duty soldiers. That many of them are first generation immigrants. And I feel incredibly proud to see those heroes that defend our country while bringing their families together to pass on the spirit of patriotism to the future generation. On March twelfth, I attended the LA County Sanitation District Meeting that they announced that there will be on April twelfth, from ten AM to two PM, the Earth Day Festival will take place in their main office in Whittier. Random shy, families and children are encouraged to attend and learn how they can contribute to protecting the environment. In March thirteen, I participated the Asian American Real Estate Association Tri-County Twenty Twenty-Five Gala and installation ceremony at the San Gabriel Country Club. Many professionals that who served our city in the San Gabriel Valley were in attendance. It's remarkable that last year installation ceremony was held at the San Gabriel Sheraton. So this year, they have again choosing our city at as their event location. That reflects our growing recognition as a hub for professional gathering. So hopefully, they will bring more TOT tax echoing our council, yes. I mean, we all need that. And so that concludes my report. And closed session we have now. And the next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty PM, meeting adjourned at nine oh five PM. Thank you.